So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
I still want to say.
Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So votes. Second.
All those bigger. So, this evening, I'd like to start with accepting the resignation of Tommy John Skivoni and congratulating him on moving up to bigger and better, but to express my regret because it has been a pleasure, an absolute pleasure, serving with you on boarding of the nest. Thank you for your service.
Oh, come on. Well, I have to say, I guess I wasn't going to do this at the end of the meeting, but now, you know, I didn't come to this decision easily, and I was elected to the Southampton Town Board, as we said, and it seemed appropriate that I resigned from this board, given the time commitments of that and my job, and from what I said in the last meeting, I think we should replace this seat with someone from the community and the board shall move on. You know, I was proud to serve on a board of people who have been so committed to our children, our families, and the taxpayers of the district. I know that every person on this board shares that commitment and the past board members as well, Sandy Kroll, Susan Cincella, Teresa Sammett, and David Disk, and I served with those folks as well, and they're very good people. You know, this board, we have had our times of discourse and disagreement, but never in that time did any one of us waver from our commitment to the community and the children. And that is a sign of a good, an effective board, and I know that we will continue, that this board will continue to be effective and work for the best possible outcome for our students and the taxpayers of this district. So, I was grateful to have the opportunity to be on this board, to give whatever skills I have, bear it for the school district. The school district has been in existence for over 150 years. We are just a few people in the long line of people to serve on this board, and I am proud to have done it, and I'm proud to, with some of the accomplishments that we have done in the three and a half years that I've been on the board, and like I said, to work with you all. I want to thank the teachers, the staff members of this school district, our administrators, because, you know, tomorrow morning when we leave and you're here, you're running the building, you're teaching our kids, you're making this place run. We have a fine teaching staff, our administrators, you guys are great, and Katie Graves, you are an effective leader. I've been doing this for 32 years, and you are among the best. So, thank you, and I hope you're here for a very long time. And now we have a meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to public input one. Anybody like to speak at public input one? No? At this time, we'll move into the superintendent's report.
Okay, and I will begin because I'm your acting school business administrator, which is a job I never want to do ever again. So, I have not enjoyed it one bit, and once I wipe the tears out my eyes because I just am going to miss Tommy John so much. I mean, you've been a wonderful board member. I'm going to cover the Affordable Care Act, only because I asked Jennifer to help me, Jennifer Bishami, to help me with this piece, because we keep hearing in, this appearing on the board agenda, the Affordable Care Act, and why did we have it on board agenda? We may get community members that look at it and say, huh, why do we have that? Because we keep hearing that it's going to be repealed and replaced, but in fact, that is not the case at all with the employee mandate. The employee mandate has not, that has not been discussed at all. So, the Affordable Care Act, or the ACA, has not been, the discussion for it being repealed and replaced for employee is not, that's going to continue in full force and effect. We're not going to see that ending at all. That's not been discussed. So, the recent executive orders by President Trump do not impact the employee mandate. So, in case board members got any questions about that in the community with this appearing, because it appears for the last four years, we've seen it every December, because look back period evaluation happens in November, and every December, the board has that list that comes out. So, I didn't, I wanted to kind of cover this so that you felt very comfortable with any questions that might come up in the weeks ahead. And often, you don't have me to answer those questions over the Christmas vacation. I know in the last four years, you've had those questions come up. So, the provisions, the ACA, for large employers, employers have 50 employees or more, and that falls under the school district. The district must demonstrate that they qualify and that they're offered it. As a matter of fact, we offer it through this board resolution. They receive a letter, and they have to respond that yes, I want to take the Affordable Care Act, or no, I do not, by January 12th. We have to have that back by law. That's mandated. To qualify for it, the person has to work an average of 30 hours per week during the look-back period or the anticipated work year coming ahead. So, if we've hired that person in the, going, moving forward, we have to have offered it. And so, these are the premiums. The person pays 50 percent. So, in the, in this current school year, an individual plan is roughly $12,000, so they have to pay 50 percent of that, or $6,000. For the family plan, it's $28,000, so they would have to pay roughly $14,000. So, if a person has no other means of paying for their health care, they may be very, very much want to have that provision. We have seen very little participation in this program. Either they have health insurance through a spouse, through family, or some other provision to pay for it. So, we've seen very, very small participation. But if you notice, we always budget fully for it because things change. So, we've been very careful to budget for it. We've also been very careful to make sure that we don't arbitrarily make it too available. So, we keep those hours very careful that it's, you know, we don't go overboard on the 30 hours per week in an arbitrary manner for employees. We make sure that they really are our full-time employees. Why is Affordable Care Act compliance so critical? So, why have we so carefully made sure that it appears on the board agenda that we, especially this year? So, for the last four years, we put it on the board agenda, we send it out, we've been very careful to be compliant. Where, you know, throughout the state, folks have not been as careful as we have been here at Sag Harbor Schools. Well, in September 2017, the IRS published an informational letter from its Office of Chief Counsel, their attorney, stating that the president's executive orders do not change employer obligations under the Affordable Care Act. The letter also indicates that the IRS intends to enforce the employer mandates very soon. The IRS has just launched an electronic system for enforcing the Affordable Care Act. So, in other words, they're going, it looks like they're going to start coming after employers. And this is the shared responsibility and the tax penalties. So, this is a way for the IRS to start finding and bringing in additional funds through the IRS for those employers that employ 150 employees or more that haven't been compliant. I want to reassure everyone, we have been compliant, but I wanted to let you know that this, the game has changed and it's gotten much more, the, those who have not been being compliant, the, if the IRS has an opportunity to make income, this is going to be a means for them to do so. So, yeah, sure, absolutely.
Can I have a question on the last slide? I'm going to wait until the end, you want to go back?
Yep, no, actually, it'd probably be easier because I'm not as good at this as Jennifer's, so if you do have a question, I think I probably better do it as we go along.
Okay, sure. And if you, if you don't know the answer, maybe could just, I expect that you're not an expert on this, because this is, very few people actually do even understand this, I think. But anyway, the, with the penalties and the calculation of penalties, is that the same with the bill that's going to be voted on? That's not being changed in the law either?
The individual is different.
No, I'm aware of that. I know that, I know employers have to provide it if they have a certain number of employees. I was just curious if the calculations and the numbers and all that is also maintained the same going forward?
This is all staying the same?
It's all, exactly.
It's all, so this, the attorneys for the IRS and for the Affordable Care Act are now, not only are you, you have to do this, and you've had to do this for the last, this started five years ago. Actually, it started five years ago, just monitoring what it would look like for school districts or employers, and then they started putting it on the board agendas four years ago, then three years ago, we actually had to start providing it and putting it in our budget. Now, what they're saying is if you don't follow it, here's what the penalty is going to look like.
I was just curious if anything's changed in the law.
No, no. This is new. The penalties are new.
Okay.
And they haven't started to roll them out, but now they're showing you what the penalty costs are going to look like. Now, we also have, we come close to the 95 percent just through our labor negotiations contracts where we provide it, but we still have a percentage that are not provided for. So, here's what it would look like for Sag Harbor specifically, and that's what the penalty would be.
I'm sorry, when you say that penalty, you didn't offer anyone any insurance?
If for our 5 percent. If we didn't offer 5 percent, what it would look like in penalties?
This is just for 5 percent then?
Yeah. Right. So, the Affordable Care Act compliance is gauged by the IRS on a month-by-month basis, and the penalties are assessed at a future date but are applied monthly. After years of delay, the IRS could be moving closer to the enforcement of this. One of the main remaining questions surrounding the Affordable Care Act is when the IRS will get serious about enforcement, but they can go back all through the years that businesses have been non-compliant, and the IRS has proven themselves to do that for any, you know, individuals or businesses that have tried to evade them. So, that, you know, that beginning could be really, really threatening for some businesses and municipalities that have, you know, just haven't been careful about this. So, it's, so, the letter has, the letter seems to indicate that the IRS is in intention of enforcing employer provisions, you know, in the upcoming future. I just want to reinforce that through our board resolutions every December and our looking at the look-back period, and we've done the direct communications, we've had the letters of intent returned to us, and we've had very low participation rate, but we have, we've got our checks and balances all in place. But I did want to go back through this in case somebody questions, you know, wow, you have that list every year. We have very low participation for whatever, you know, are the individuals that are working for us, don't. I know that we've got, you know, substitutes that are retired teachers. They have, they have their retirement already taken care of. We have folks that they get their insurance through their spouses. So, and again, we have such a small list of people because most of them are covered already through, through the unions. So, again, that was just a bit of housekeeping, but because that list does appear every year in December, I just wanted to go back through that so we had an understanding of it.
Any other questions for Katie on this?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
Do letter, the letters of intent, do they have to give a reason for why they're not accepting it?
No, no, no. But they do need to have that signed off, and they do get filed, and we keep them on file, and the auditors do look at that every year.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
That was my own as business administrator. I hope to give up that title very quickly.
Soon.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
Am I doing it from over there?
Sure. Here, over here.
So, Mr. Guinan, you want to talk about this since you sort of spearheaded this?
I was able to present to the board the last meeting two weeks ago. Rachel's Challenge is very much in line with what we hope to do here in terms of cultivating a positive school culture based on kindness and empathy, and it's a perfect opportunity to kick off what we hope to be a long-term vision of having a student-run peer support group that is a very meaningful part of the school. The Rachel's Challenge program leads to the development of a club, and we're going to riff off that model and build this peer support club.
Great. Some of this, we reviewed it, I believe, at past board meeting, but this is just a review or a listing of past events. I'll start down on the 6th of December with the sixth grade concert, high school winter concert band and chorus on the 11th, conversations with IB coordinators. Mr. Guinan led that event. It was an opportunity for parents of IB students to come in and have a conversation similar to the conversations with administrators events that we hold monthly. The 13th was an event that, the college planning meeting was an event hosted by Ms. Mato, and on the 14th, which was, what was that, last Friday, I think, was the Snowflake Tea, and the grandparents came out with two or three inches of snow on the ground, so that was Just some photos of the sixth grade science fair, which was a big hit. Want to talk a little bit about that, Ms. Carriero?
It was just a new thing now that we have, in the case of Ms. Trigg's retirement, we have Mr. Rainey who spearheaded it. He worked closely with Ms. Olson Down to help organize it, and it was a great thing for kids to do, to see how, demonstrate their, through Goldberg project of the simple machine, making one simple task or complicated task.
High school fall play took place recently. That was a hit as well. Students had a good time. This is a picture of the chorus singing.
Sixth grade.
Is that the, I can't see that.
Sixth grade chorus.
Sixth grade. Is that Ivy, Mr. Guinan?
Yes, that's the quartet performed Schubert's Piano Concerto Number Two. It was excellent.
Some more photos. Upcoming events, the last concert, I believe, is tomorrow night. Sixth grade chorus visits the morning program on the 21st. We have our early release drill on Friday, winter recess, we've got Hamea, Hampton Music Educators Association Festival on 12th and 13th, Martin Luther King Day on the 15th, and the next conversations with administrators meeting on the 19th. And then not listed on the slide is that this is the time that many students are hearing back, seniors, that is, with regard to their early applications, whether it's early action or early decision. So, we've had some really happy students with some impressive acceptances and some students who were a little disappointed but had their application still not rejected but deferred into the regular applicant pool. So, stressful time for a lot of seniors, but they seem to be doing really well. So, is it Ms. Reynoso or Mr. Malone is next?
I'll do it, Mr. Nichols.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Great time of year at the elementary school. Some of the, some of the events that have taken place already center around our performing arts program and the many wonderful opportunities that the children are given to not only get up on stage, but all the work that goes in prior to that. Our performing arts groups at grade one, two, and three meet one time a week with our music teachers, as well as our art teachers and other members of the staff, and work on all aspects of preparing for a show. We had our first and second grade over the last couple of weeks. Today, our third grade performed, and all three shows were outstanding. The kids, the kids always amazed with the help of the staff, and a lot of family and friends were able to attend and enjoy themselves. Thank you to our PTA for all that they do. At this time of year, it's busy for, it's a busy time for families, and many members of our PTA give of their spare time to put on the Gingerbread Night event, which is a big hit for the children and I think their parents as well on the, on the 8th of December. That was a, that was a great event. Of course, our winter concert, which was last Thursday, a wonderful evening where the children get to share all their talents in the musical area. We highlighted the KR's Restaurant as an example of one of the many projects going on around the building. This kind of wraps up the work that's been happening all fall, and many classes are inviting families in to see the culminating event. KR got involved in this study of what it takes to run a restaurant. It's been something that Susan Raybeck's class, I think she said she's done it for about 15 years, so it's definitely a tradition in our school. The children visited, one of the students' parents own the restaurant in New York, MJ Dowling, so they had a chance to go there for lunch, kind of get a, get a feel for behind the scenes of what it takes to run a restaurant. And then on Friday, they transformed their classroom into a little breakfast cafe, and parents and grandparents were able to enjoy that. Here's a few, few shots. Here's our large chorus singing. They do sneak peeks for the rest of the school, that morning program, and it gives them a chance to, to warm up for the concert. These are our fourth and fifth graders, and some third graders are involved in the chorus. Here's the full large chorus on the night of the concert in the choir robes, led by Mr. O'Han and Mrs. Rice. Some of the other groups. There's Mr. Fox and his orchestra. Oh, there's our restaurateur. And Ms. Raybeck and Ms. Randall, who's the teaching assistant in the classroom.
Okay.
Oh, this was a good one. The morning of the restaurant, prior to inviting the guests into the classroom, they recited a poem all about table manners, and they juxtaposed horrible manners, and then they wrapped up with what it means to have good manners. So, it was really cute. Everybody laughed. And here's just the group getting outside even on a cold day when the snow was on the ground. Actually, give a shout out to Mr. De Silva and his crew because, was that on Thursday we had the snow in the morning? They cleared everything up and were able to even get the court clear for recess, which was, which was nice for the kids. There's one of our subs, Mr. Youngs, turning the jump rope. And we still have some, some things happening this week. We have some of our after-school clubs performing. Today, our dance club shared their talents. We have the kindergarten sing-along on Wednesday. Our fourth grade example of one of the classroom projects happens on Thursday where they transform their classrooms into a museum experience where families can share in all the different traditions that happen this time of year throughout, throughout Sag Harbor. And then when we come back from the break, we get into our YMCA swim program where all of the students from grades one through five have a chance to go down to the YMCA. There's a brief assessment to find out their level of swimming ability, and then they get involved in lesson groups, and that runs through March.
Mr. Fisher?
Any questions from the small? Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you. On November 30th, Mr. Crable retired after years of service with the district, which left us down one person in the tech department. And we were informed that Mr. Zambra is resigning to take a position in another district close to home. So, he will be leaving us on December 27th. That will be his last day. So, that puts us in a pretty tough position in terms of being able to provide the level of support that we'd like to be able to provide for the staff members. So, for that reason, I'm recommending to the board that we retain Mr. Zambra's services, specifically for special projects outside of the normal workday that we might need him for. In particular, he's been very involved with all of the productions in the auditorium. He's intimately familiar with all of the equipment in there, and my recommendation is at least through the two upcoming shows, if we could keep him to assist with that. He would only be available to come day-o show, though. He would not be there for the practices the way he is normally. Instead, that will fall to the students who he's been working with throughout the year, and they're already aware of the fact that he will not be present. In addition to that, in order to continue to provide this, the level of service, as I mentioned before, that we'd like to, I'm recommending that we enter into an agreement with Core BTS, which is a local provider of services that we've used for many years. They provide assistance with various backend equipment and anything basically related to networking and computers for school districts. They're well-known across the island, as well as the state. Actually, they're not even just in the state, they're based out in Wisconsin. So, for that, for that reason, I'm asking the board to consider entering into an agreement that would give us a person on a temporary basis to step in until we have a chance to replace the position permanently. Ideally, this person will have an opportunity to work closely with Victor over the next few weeks before Victor leaves, try to get as much of a knowledge transfer as possible so that in a perfect world, everything will just continue to run smoothly.
I'm sorry, Scott, when is his last day?
27th.
Of December.
Yes, ma'am.
And the Core BTS, the qualified person, is that the same person every day?
Yes, one person for whatever period we, you know, when this service is booked.
Can I have, show us a question about that contract, should we have, or when we're voting on it, what would you prefer?
And now, I think would be a good time.
Okay. With the contract, are we committed to a certain amount of time, or is it ad hoc as we need the person?
No, it's a commitment of 60 days.
60 days, part-time for 60 days?
Full-time for 60 days.
So, if you were finding a qualified candidate before then to fill the position, what would happen?
Oh, we would be able to, we, I understand the question, I'm sorry. We would be able to end the agreement sooner if we needed to, but we've signed up for a maximum of 60 days. Sorry, I should have phrased that differently.
And there is, there was one, I hope, because what they've also done is they've said, we can go, it's four per hour, like we can use like three hours in a day. So, we had put slash per hour. So, what they've done in the contract they've written for us is we, they gave us a daily rate, and they gave us an hourly, which is slightly more. It's like $7 more an hour.
Which makes sense.
Which makes sense.
Right.
So, we can use the person for three hours in a day. You know, so, for example, if we want supervision for the students during the musical, they can send someone out for three hours during the day, which would be great. And we've worked closely with Core BTS in my four years here, and they're a solid, solid firm. They've been, they've been very good to us.
Any other questions about the recommendation before the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
And Scott's leaving us now because he wants to pick up his son who's coming in. Go, go.
Hello, Board of Education. I'm Marcus. This is my first time at the podium. I've been here a little bit over a month, and we've been doing a lot of work around here.
Welcome to Sag Harbor.
Couple of things we're focusing on right now, with all the new stuff that you have, all the projects you had prior to my arrival, and we're trying to put together a decent preventive maintenance program so we can maintain all the equipment that we've purchased. And that's, you know, requires filter changes, belt changes. We have a nice project kicking off, that window project on the 1907 part of the building. We did receive, the architects received these shop drawings from the contractor. They're being reviewed now. After approval, they will go to, back to the contractor and then go into fabrication. We don't have a timeline of the start date, but I was told sometime maybe around March. So, we met with the architects a few weeks ago. That's been a lot of fun with BCKIBI Group. They're on the Stella Smaris project. We're reviewing right now the pre-K design with Mr. Malone and his team, and trying to get some buy-in from the pre-K teachers and seeing if the design's going to actually work for Sag Harbor. Lighting. Lighting by the main entrance of Pearson. We know it's a little dark outside, and we are looking, we had the contractor here. We put up some temp lighting out there. That's only temporary. We're going to try to make it, we're going to talk about wall packs, increasing the lighting, but not impact the neighbors. So we are focusing a lot of attention on that right now. I just want this issue to bear with us. Hopefully, we'll have something rectified in a couple of weeks. And the bus lot parking, that's been a comment up at every board meeting, it seems like. We have our heads wrapped around what the, what our solutions are. All right? So we're in the process right now of putting some lenses on it so we have light focusing down. We also are working on the timing of the lights when they come on and off. So we should have that. We were looking at that actually before the first of the year. The lights, the shields came in. They came in the wrong color. So they're going to send them back and get new ones. So of course, that has to happen.
And you have an interesting twist on that, too, is that they were at a hundred percent.
Right. The lighting is programmed to be a hundred percent wattage. So what they're going to do is dial it down to fifty percent. We'll get longevity out of the batteries because each of them, you know, it's not hardwired, so it's done by solar. So the solar, it's the solar panel. The energy stored in the batteries, the batteries then provide light for when we need it. So right now, they're at a hundred percent, and the batteries only last six hours. So we do three hours at night, three hours in the morning. When we drop it down to forty, fifty percent, we'll have, we could probably do six hours of light at night, and then maybe two in the morning. This way, when the bus drivers arrive at five-thirty to get rolling, they'll have some light to see.
They'll have enough light, but it also, I think, will make our neighbors much happier because they won't be at Broadway lighting.
That's the plan. Once again, daily operations, you know, we're cleaning the buildings, we're maintaining the heat, we're fixing some steam traps, boilers, we're doing snow removal. So it's been a lot of fun. And of course, the natural grass. We just winterized the irrigation system on November tenth, no, twelfth. And we aerated, we overseeded, so we took all those fall procedures that the architect gave us, and we're just going to keep on, keep it on with, you know, maintaining that field to the best of our abilities.
Can I ask a question about the field?
Yes.
By the way, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're so happy that you're here.
I'm so happy to be here. Thank you.
It's wonderful. The, with the field, is there any off-season care that has to happen where students can't use the field, or is the field now available for students to use at any time, as long as they're not cutting class?
At this point, the grass is dormant, all right, during this type of year, time of year, so it's kind of resting. Come springtime, you know, we're going to still overseed and stuff, but the kids could use it. I mean, at this point, I think it's just a mean.
It's full use of the field, no?
Yeah, we just, the only thing we want to be careful about is any, what the architects recommended is no, we want to be very careful about any kind of organized sports. That would really, like, where we might present with overuse. But recess, the kids are out there every day, and they're, but they're not going to overuse it in the way children, because they're playing. They're just playing. But if we brought organized sports in during the winter when the grass is dressing, and it really, the roots haven't had an opportunity to go, go south enough. They really haven't had an opportunity. So it's still a fragile surface still. So if we had organized sports during the winter, it could harm, it could harm it right now because it's dormant.
The normal procedure with a new field is you let it rest for a season. But unfortunately, because we have one field, you know, we're using it. And we're going to maintain it. We're going to make sure that, you know, if we see a problem, we're going to address it immediately, so.
I have a question about this. How are you? And welcome.
Thank you.
I'm leaving.
You'll be missed.
Thank you. You mentioned that we were replacing steam traps. I'm assuming that's over in the elementary school, our steam system. About two years ago, we had all of them, or the ones that we could find, that were, they were replaced. And I'm glad that you're looking at that, and I'd ask you to put that on your preventive, preventive maintenance schedule for the summertime.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That was, that will help balance that system out a great deal. We replaced the boiler in the elementary school, and keeping the steam traps up to date is paramount.
Oh, absolutely. We had one leak in the other day, so we addressed it, and we're back in business, so.
Okay. Thank you. I was happy to hear, steam trap.
Yeah.
That was an unknown thing.
This is just a shot of the guys doing some preventive maintenance in the gymnasiums, the middle school and high school. We were changing some light ballasts. And while we're up there, we're cleaning them, we're dusting them, we're cleaning the shields, you know, we're changing bulbs, whatever we can do.
Getting balls down.
Getting balls down. I could have a ball drop, sure. The elementary school's got a new water fountain. The one on the right is obviously the new one. It has the bottle filled, it's filtered, and the kids seem to really enjoy that style of fountain. We are waiting for some power to be hooked up to that, and that's going to happen on the twenty-seventh, Wednesday. This is a horrible picture, but you can see, like, this area here is like the old brush on the wheel. So we changed out all the brushes, and that's a huge snow removal piece of equipment right there. It's great. It goes right down the sidewalks, and it throws the snow, and you don't even see it anymore. I'm kind of glad we had that taken care of before this last week's snow. New steamer in the kitchen. We plumbed it in and brought power to it, and they're making some delicious soup the other day, and it was nice. This is the new table saw in the technology room downstairs. Mr. Ed Malone, I believe his name is. He's also getting some more equipment in, so we'll be addressing his needs as well. Decorating, awesome. Giant wreaths, sixty-inch wreaths. I had never seen wreaths so big. And, you know, JR and his team, they ended up throwing that up on the wall, and looking on the building, and making it look beautiful. And that's all I got. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. I have a rather comprehensive list. I believe we had this last time. I'm just happy to report that our very successful fall season is now complete. And I won't go through all the names, but there are many highlighted up there. We have some proud parents in the house. Their daughter would end up being on there. But again, this was an extremely successful fall campaign, and we've moved into the winter sports season, and now we're in full swing, and we've geared over to that mode, and we've changed the uniforms out, which is quite, quite a labor-intensive process. We have to get over three hundred articles of clothing back, and wash them, and catalog them, and get them ready for next year. But, you know, we're in full winter mode. Usually around this time of year, I take a lot of meetings with mainly juniors to discuss their upcoming plans for athletics and college, and how that kind of fits into that process. That's been, that's taken up the majority of my time in the last few weeks. It's very exciting to see these young people starting to realize that after they leave here, there are going to be some opportunities for them to continue on with athletics. And we just try to figure out the best way to fit them into, into the education where they're selecting to go. We also work diligently to get scholarships, not per se Division One athletic scholarships, but there are many other avenues that we can go to get, to get these children, mainly their parents, because they're writing the checks. But there's a lot of avenues that we go out to find, different money. We had a student who was given the AmeriQ News Twelve Award just last week, and then we had another student who received a very prestigious award in terms of soccer. And it's the first of our kind, the first time we've won that award as a Pearson student. So we're working hard to get the kids squared away as they move on from this place. We are piloting a program called Sports U. I gave a presentation to the policy committee the other night. Katie sat in on it, and it was essentially what Sports U is, is it's our new means of communicating. We're going to gather all the data, coaches to parents, parents to players, players to, so that whole triad. And what we'll do is, at the end of the season, we'll look at everything from a data perspective and see if this program was efficient and fit our needs. There are many out there. This one, the reason I selected this one was it was endorsed by Section Eleven. So they sent the representative out to us free of charge. We got the program free of charge, and it seems to be like anything, it started slow, but it's starting to pick up a little bit of steam. I had our reorganization meeting for, for combined sports. We hold this once a year about this time. I meet with all the local athletic directors, including East Hampton, Ross, Bridgehampton, and Southampton, and we discuss what the sports landscape is going to look like next year. All those decisions need to be made in February, so what I'll do is I'll have a concrete plan about how we're going to proceed, that I'll be able to show the Board of Education before we finalize those decisions. Anytime we may enter into a combined agreement, we have to have both parties' superintendents sign off on it. And I do my best to keep Katie, we meet regularly, to keep Katie informed about, about what direction we're going with each particular sport. We did receive a letter from the Stony Brook School that they were withdrawing from Section Eleven. That does affect us because they're a rival, one of our rivals and league opponents. They decided to, essentially, their letter read that they were going to leave the section and pursue a private athletics league. So we will miss them. You know, anytime you lose a rival in the league opponent, it saddens you, but we'll probably do some scrimmages with them moving forward. On Wednesday, we'll be having our second Athletic Directors Council, Student Council. This will be for the winter season, and I'm hoping after that Wednesday meeting that I can get some real, real agenda items to bring back for my next committee meeting, for my athletic committee meeting. I've invited, in conjunction with the coaches, a large group of students to come in on Wednesday during academic support and meet with me for forty minutes to discuss about the state of the athletics at Pearson. That whole process is kind of centered around, I remember we used to use the term the Sag Harbor Experience or the Pearson Experience. I think that is kind of what we're looking for there. I like to see from the students that are living it, you know, how we can, how can we, how can we, as the trustees and the athletic director and everybody, do a better job for them. And so it'd be nice to hear it from the students. Give them a real, if not a direct line to the Board of Education, an indirect avenue of communication. And then we have Spirit Night coming up on one-twenty-six. We're back loaded with home games this year, so I'm anticipating that after, after the Christmas break, after the holiday break, we'll be getting some packed gyms. So we'll have a couple, we have a couple Friday night games, and then obviously, that Spirit Night, we'll put our youth hoop on show, as well as the entirety of our whole basketball program, from kindergarten all the way up to seniors. Boys and girls. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Brown? Guys, a quick one, this might be helpful. Could you just give us a couple of examples of some of the awards? Like, you know, what does that mean, all-conference, like on the next slide, you know, all state, all league? Just a little quick, you know?
There's different levels of awards, and the majority of these are voted on by the, what they call the Coaches Association. So the athletic directors don't have any say in this. The coaches are vote on it. And the entry-level award, which is usually awarded to like an up-and-rising freshman or is an all-league. And then from there, it goes bigger and bigger. So it's, it goes from all-league to all-conference. And then when you get to all-county, that is a pretty prestigious award. That's mainly reserved for exceptional juniors or sophomores, and then, you know, that's usually a senior award. We also had some people go further and get, we had an all-Newsday, all-Lone Island selection for our second year in a row in field hockey, which doesn't usually happen. Charlotte Johnson got that. And then we also had Paige Schaefer who got all-state. We had Sam Warren who got all-state in soccer. All of these are like, you know, it goes all-county, and then it goes all-Lone Island, all-state. There are, we've done very well. Normally, we get a select amount of all-league and all-conference based on where you finish, but these individual awards are usually earned in the postseason. And because we're so successful in the postseason this year, we got to go to those upper echelons of awards a little bit more frequently than we do. There are outliers in the past. We've had all-state field hockey players, and, you know, we had one last year with Anna Sherwood.
We've never had this many, right?
Yeah, across the board, this is, I mean, there's so many awards in there, and this is not even to really, like, we have, we have one all-county academic example here, but we're always winning on the all-county academic, on the athletic, on the academic front. And I'd like to present to the board, at the end of the school year, I'll show you just how we fare when it comes to sportsmanship, and when we come from the scholar athlete teams, where they've changed the format for a little bit. Our teams are always on those lists, like, almost every team is on there, but now they've got it where if your team doesn't make it, you can actually get the individual award for it. But I must say, you know, and it's kudos to the educational staff, our students are top-notch when it comes to our student athletes in the grades, so.
This is fairly extraordinary, though.
This is, I, I, I.
That's Susan's question.
And there's no, and there's no.
I've never seen a list in the past years this many kids.
It's extraordinary, yeah.
And it's, and it, the, this whole thing happens because of the coaches, and it, you know, the coaches and the kids, they just get in there, and it was, we just really did it. And it was, I'm kind of speechless because it makes my job so much more rewarding when I get to travel all these places, and our school is on, like, where's Pearson? You know, and, oh, we're on Eastern and Long Island, so it gets very exciting, so.
So did I understand that you're kind of taking a little bit of a mentoring role, helping students and coaches figure out that whole scholarship thing?
Yes, the, I've taken a proactive role since my, since my secretary assistant works in Guidance Department now, so I can often meet with the Guidance Department, and we can, we can discuss certain students that might qualify for certain things. Just in this last couple, in this last week, I made three recommendations for, for different awards. And I think that was a component that maybe we had been lacking in previous years. So now I'm trying to get the ball rolling on that and really try to dive in and figure out what's best for these kids, because there is a piece of them missing if they go on to college and the athletics isn't there anymore, so.
Well, and not only that, but I know that, I mean, the board may know that I was a Division One athlete and was on full ride scholarship, and it was only because my coach pulled me aside and said, hey, you can do this. You should, I mean, it wasn't my parents, it wasn't, it was, it was the leaders in my school that pulled me aside and said, there's opportunity for you. So I'm, I'm glad that that's finally here, because I've noticed that that's been an oversight, because I've seen incredible athletes come through the program that didn't realize that they could have their college paid for if they just put in a little bit of effort towards that recruiting, so I appreciate that.
And I really congratulate Mr. Brown by working with all the administrators here that have, that know other coaches, and they're getting in contact with, with college coaches and using their college networking. So he's also done that, and he took Mrs. Graves aside and said that there was a student that was eligible because of their, they reached a certain level, which made them eligible for a scholarship on Long Island. And I wrote the student's letter of recommendation, and two weeks ago, the.
Can we save the student?
I think we can. Sam Warren was awarded a twenty thousand dollar scholarship, and they said that it was, it was partly because of his letter of recommendation. And I was one of the two people that wrote him a letter of recommendation. So his father stood in front of my car on my way here, coming into school, and I thought, this is either good or bad. And he said, you write a pretty good letter of recommendation, but it's because we now have a connection between athletics and the guidance office, and, and anybody can write a letter of recommendation. So, and I could speak because I knew the student. I knew what he did during the summer, and I knew he was, you know, he was, what he, you know, I knew him clearly. So, you know, Eric's happy to run down any one of us to do right by a child. So that connection has really worked out very well for these students. But they often don't get, they aren't eligible for a scholarship until they've gotten league MVP or all-county or all-conference, and then all of a sudden, the scholarships open up, but you have to know what they have to then do to jump through those hoops.
In the Guidance Department, Ms. McGrady, Ms. Carrie Arrow, obviously was a Division One field hockey player. And it's cool when I get to talk to these major Division One coaches, because I can't get them on the phone unless I get somebody else's help.
So Ms. Carrie Arrow has been really happy to just call up people and say, I know you. I know you when you used to be a player. So that's been great. They're really younger than we do.
Okay, so now I have two questions. What did you play, Diana?
Football.
Thank you.
You had to ask?
I didn't know. I didn't know. I did not know. I did not know. I just think that Coach of the Year for Donna Fisher needs to be pointed out. I thought that was great.
Uh, yeah, that was an exceptional, it was a first-time experience for the, for our students. It was great, it was just to be an honor to be there. And, and Coach Fisher has worked very diligently over the last three years to get this group there.
Yep.
So, as all our coaches, I mean, they all put in a lot of effort, so.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, Tommy, we're gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss Victor, he was a close personal friend of mine, so, best of luck to you. Thank you.
I just have one more detail that we didn't mention up there. Go ahead. Is on Friday, we are doing state-mandated early evacuation drill, which is handy. We leave only fifteen minutes early. They sent out a reminder last week, they sent out, they're sending out two more reminders this week, because the buses will go home fifteen minutes early. The entire district has to be evacuated. Every single person has to leave. We sweep the building, then people can come back. But we have to prove to New York State that we can evacuate the building. So, it's fifteen minutes early, it's a state-mandated drill, just to prove that we can evacuate the building. And one, the beautiful thing is, is that for our custodians, we really do clear out the building right before Christmas break, so they kind of, they do a little happy dance that we can, we can do that. People do come back, because we have a game that night, but it is, it is set on that date to sort of force folks to get in their cars and go home.
Is that the end of the superintendent's report?
That's the end of the superintendent's report.
All right, so we'll move into the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 6?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. I noticed that we are approving minutes from meetings in September and October, and I was just wondering, what if a delay was, and is it possible to kind of feel a delay on both?
Yeah, those, those minutes got held up because they were very, very complicated minutes, and there was a lot of discussion between January, I and the district clerk about how those minutes should read, and we actually did several rounds with the attorneys of how they should read, because there were the types of minutes where there was lots of motions on the floor, and then not all motions carried, and things like, so there, there was a, a robust back-and-forth between several parties for that particular one. We've, we've approved other minutes that happened after that particular meeting.
That's why I was wondering, it was three, three months ago.
Yeah, no, it, it was a very big meeting with a lot of complicated motions and sub-motions and, and all sorts of stuff. But, we've got a good system ironed out now.
We have a good policy.
Well, thank you. It's all that extra work.
And a good policy in place, and so, you'll notice that we also have like, December 4th minutes on here. So, we're, we're, we've got all, we've ironed out the kinks. I think we're all caught up now, and very happy to say that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to abstain.
Okay. Any abstain?
One.
Are you gonna do that the whole meeting?
No, no.
No, I, I, I'm not, I'm just.
Next meeting.
Can I get a motion to approve Special Education Items 7, 8? We should note that 9 has a typo, hopefully it's fixed on your copy as well. It should say be resolved. Oh, that is business, thank you. Special Education Items 7 and 8 then, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Any questions carry? Um, I, I agree.
Are you gonna do that the whole meeting?
No, no.
No, I, I, I'm not, I'm just.
Next meeting.
Can I get a motion to approve Special Education Items 7, 8? We should note that 9 has a typo, hopefully it's fixed on your copy as well. It should say be resolved. Oh, that is business, thank you. Special Education Items 7 and 8 then, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Any questions carry? Um, business item, just a couple of things to note on your copies. Number 9 should say be at resolve, and the numbers have been modified. Is that on everybody's copy or just mine?
On everybody's copy.
Okay, inside?
Be at resolution. And number 18, with the, we're gonna add or.
Yep, I'm, just wanna make sure that everybody's, okay, so, 'cause you've got the other copy on. Number 9, it says be at resolution, it should say be at resolve.
Understood.
Um, the general ledger amount has been adjusted. And then the last thing, on number 18, another typo, we need to put in or. So, on the very last sentence, the compensation daily rate of 395, and then in parentheses, we have 56.43. Those two rates don't coincide, it should be daily rate or hourly rate. So we're just gonna put an or in that resolution.
Or hourly rate?
Right.
Yep, so daily rate of 395 or 56.43 per hour. It's like one or the other, because it's not both.
Right.
Any questions on those edits? Okay. So can I get a motion to approve Business Items 9 through 20 as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I, I had a question about Item 11.
Mm-hmm.
Could there just be an explanation of contractual transportation, how, why that's transferring? Are those, those aren't the costs, actual costs, we're just, do we not use that money? We're transferring it, or it was spent the way it was in, in the first five lines, but we're counting it elsewhere?
I think we are, we are making contractual transfer, because we've used up those funds. So we're for, that's for paying for contractual transfers. I think that the, the funding from that line has been spent, has been expended.
I'm sorry, which line, the transportation line?
Yes.
So we're taking money from other lines in the budget to cover expenses for transportation, because we, that budget is diminished?
Yes, yes.
Is there any concern about going forward, whether that's going to be diminished? It just seems like a lot of-
I think it's for the remainder, I think she's done it for the, for the remainder of the school year. She's only gonna make a transfer once.
Okay.
Right.
Any other discussion?
Wasn't, wasn't this a result from the changing of the ledger codes? Which is under the code?
I think the other ones were, but I do think the contractual transportation was there, there was an increase in, in, and I can get, I can get a breakdown for you of what that was, but I think she, she went through that a few meetings ago about-
It, it does say to cover the additional, right here?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so I'm just trying to figure out, so we, is it that we had extra money in instructional, and so we're moving it over?
No, I'm, no, not for the contractual transportation, there's, there's-
Well, she's saying-
No, no, we're transferring it from instructional to transportation, right? The first three are instructional. Instructional salary pre-K, instructional salary K through 3, and 9 through 12. So we're taking money from our instructional salary budget, and we're transferring it to our transportation budget.
Not from the budget, but from the actual accounts.
Okay, so the budget-
Can't change after your budget's approved.
How much we're spending on that budgeted item, we're, we're moving it from one line item in the budget to another?
Yes.
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 Right, so we don't need that money to cover that?
No.
Okay.
No, we're fine.
So we, we over-budgeted it or whatever?
Are those people who left, or what does that just account for? You're insane, Viv.
Usually, that, for example, I can give you a perfect example. For pre-K, we budgeted to have, have three sections, and we, we probably didn't, we didn't find of having the sections, we, or we planned on four sections, just to be on the safe side.
And then is that what happened with K through 3? I think there were less sections there, right, than we anticipated?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I see, all right. So, she found accounts where we had some money left over? Got it. And used that to cover the account where we had completed it? So it's not like, that doesn't reflect where we're losing people, so?
No.
Because I, I can see how somebody might think that.
Right.
It's just that it was over, okay.
So, we had an elementary school librarian that took another job someplace else, so we hired a librarian at a lesser salary, because she's brand-new.
Right.
So, that's a capture.
Got it.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you on Item Number 20. It's a $7,000 donation from those two organizations, and I want to acknowledge that and say thank you so very much. It's really generous, and it's in the second program to be rolled out for our students.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 21 through?
Can we pull up 34? Can we pull 34 separately?
Yes.
Thank you.
21 through 33?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Action 21 through?
Can we pull up 34? Can we pull 34 separately?
Yes.
Thank you.
21 through 33?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Anything carries? Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Action Number 34?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'm abstaining simply because she holds a real estate license under mine, I'm a broker, and she's an agent of yours.
Perfect, thank you.
So, I, I endorse her personally. It's a conflict of interest, we've about all this.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 35, 36, and 37?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'm abstaining simply because she holds a real estate license under mine, I'm a broker, and she's an agent of yours.
Perfect, thank you.
So, I, I endorse her personally. It's a conflict of interest, we've about all this.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 35, 36, and 37?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstain? All right, anything carries? We did committee reports last time, but we, my understanding was that the wall and Honors had not met for the last meeting, and so I just added it for this meeting, because I thought you might have met since then.
We're gonna, Monday, December 11. Update on progress towards actually installing the wall. We now have a vendor to get the plaque and move forward. The group also decided to, again, put out the nominations for nominees this year, which we'll do later in the school year.
Excellent, thank you. So, a couple of things we need to discuss before we adjourn. One is naming of the Stella Maris Project, and I did watch the videotape from the last meeting, and my understanding is, we basically have three options. One, all three of them involve a survey and, and this sort of thing, but I think the difference is that ultimately it's down to who does the bulk of the heavy lifting, and where the final decision is made. Obviously, the final decision is made by the Board, but that weeding out process and all that could be done either by the Board, by the Facilities Committee, or by the Superintendent. So, at this time, I'd just like to open up the floor to thoughts about how we move forward to naming the building.
I like the idea about the Facilities Committee. They also did say that that was usually the most popular choice.
I, I agree with January, I think it's also the most inclusive, because the committee has representatives from different parts of the community, and it's important for the community to move about. So does that just mean that that committee would then develop the survey that would go out publicly, so each one of the options, we surveyed the community, right? So they would manage that, they would come up with names to go into that, they would then come back with some recommendations to the Board?
Exactly. And maybe even come up with a process of how to get ideas for names, because I'm sure community members have their own ideas of what it could be called.
Right, how do we narrow down the choices?
Yeah, and have the committee narrow down the choices that were given to them, and just kind of have, pass the ball to them and let them figure out the process, and come to the Board with recommendations.
My understanding was that the survey is a blank slate, basically, and then the Facilities Committee would weed through that.
Who chairs facilities?
It's generally your, your business administrator, and along with your facilities. But it's your business administrator is the boss of your facilities person.
So in other words, is there a, a timeliness here? Because, or no, not really?
No, we asked at the last meeting, and BCK said, there's no.
Maybe we want to do it before we, we open the doors.
Right, of course.
Which is, which is in the fall, right? So-
December.
December, okay, December, so we have the, and you're gonna want to have a little bit for that, because you're gonna make signs and all this stuff, so how far in advance does that work have to proceed, so we know when this has to be decided?
Well, I think that, as a Board, we decide which of the three we want, and if it is the Facilities Committee, then they would work backwards from whatever, I mean, we kind of pass the ball to them to figure out.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, like give themselves like a, a timeline.
I, I really, the facility seems the, the best to me again, because you do have the feedback, and, you know, I, I would recommend that they form a subcommittee, that does some of the, that makes sure that it's continued, that the work is being gone through, yeah.
So I, based on what I'm hearing, I'll make a motion that we let the Facility Planning Committee come up with a process and the timeline, and, and just periodically report to the Board on, on how that's going and where they are in that process.
Second that?
All right. Yep. Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I would just ask that, if they take it on, and I think it's a great idea that they do, that they, you know, maybe on a monthly basis, there's a representative that can report, you know, first a timeline, and then where they are, just because then the public can be kept informed of that.
Right. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of having the Facility Planning Committee come up with a timeline and the process and the procedure?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, congratulations, Facilities Committee.
They probably won't get this handed to them until February, because Phil Hunter isn't starting until the end of January.
That's the only reason I asked. So, if they form a subcommittee, they should probably do that. He should, it should be like at the top of his list. Because, you know, February will be September in a flash.
Exactly.
And like policy, that I'm gonna encourage facilities to meet throughout the summer as well, because, you know, the work, it's endless. We've worked for policy and it's endless, the work for facilities. They're two really busy, busy committees.
So the other thing that's on our agenda to discuss is the process for filling Tommy John's seat. So again, with this one, I believe there's, there's three options on the table. One is a special election. I understand you guys discussed a timeline and cost of that last time, which I appreciate January doing a little homework on that for us. The second is to leave it vacant, which has some precedence. But the third is an appointment that would be only until May when whoever it is, if they decide to run again, would then need to run for that seat. So at this time, I'll open the floor for discussion around those three choices.
The last time we had an open seat, it was appointed and it was made. So I think we have precedent, immediate precedence for that.
Other discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, we talked about this last time. Everyone seems to agree that an election just doesn't make sense, given the cost involved and how long we'd have to wait for it. You know, my initial thought was we should just leave it open, but I think some good points have been made by Tommy John, newspaper, and some folks in the community have spoken out that you could have an issue with having a quorum. There have been some important votes that have been taken that have been closed. And I also just looked at the law myself, and we are supposed to fill the seat. And I think the response to that has been, well, it's not really enforced unless there's an issue or something comes up. But it just strikes me as not a great way for a public body to operate, to not follow the law, just because we think it won't be enforced. So I think that we should follow what we did the last time and appoint someone. I think we could have a short period of time where we could announce it, give people the opportunity to submit their names, and then we should choose someone and appoint someone to fill the seat. That's what I think.
Other discussion?
I agree. I think the appointment is the route to go from my research. It's the way it's been done in the past, so I think we should continue.
Do you want to change it quick?
I agree. I'm a good review person, so I agree. And I, and I have to apologize for Tommy John because he's my neighbor and I was stalking him on his front lawn, selling him on the idea. I threw his hat in the ring, I'm grateful that he did and that he was appointed in his service. So I probably wouldn't want to share that, but I kept going across to him. He goes, "Sure?" And he's like, "I think maybe." So, and it turned out, turned out really well. So I'm confident that we would, he could get another candidate from the community. He could help us and be elected.
Other discussions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have two questions, and I'm sorry, I'm sure we talked about this last time. If the person, if we appoint a person and they run and don't win, do they sit until June?
No.
The winner is sworn in that night?
That night, yes.
That night? Okay.
You make hats and all this by our turn?
Yeah, I couldn't remember the answer. I knew that that was the case. Okay, and the second question is, the process to say to the community, would someone like to step forth and submit their name? Is there a timeline on that as well? January probably knows the answer.
No, I, I think we were working on it, and if we come to a conclusion tonight, then we can talk about the timeline. But maybe we'll just see if we want to do the impact of the process. We want, we want it to be quick.
We had, we followed the process the last time, it was similar timing.
And the, and the appointment requires only a majority vote of the sitting board members, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what happens if you have a tie?
Including.
Well, we can start whether we're going to do this or not, and then we can, then we can have a discussion about process.
But you're not here anymore. That would not be included.
He, he needs to be by law. It has to be the full board who sits. So.
But he's not on the board.
After tonight.
After tonight, he said he's not on the board.
No, I think January needs to vote to make the decision to have or replace a person. What's the, am I right?
Yeah.
I'll double check with the attorney because my understanding reading the law was that the full board makes the decision.
It does, but once you're on, you're not on the board anymore.
I understand, so if that's the case, we may just need to...
Four votes would do it.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether there's somebody in the seat or not. You know what I mean, right? Ideally, theoretically, if there was three other members, four votes.
I have the, let me look, I have the meeting, the minutes from the last, the prior ones, and I can double check and see if the exiting trustee did vote or not.
I'm probably the low voice. Yeah, I know that in the past, the board has appointed people. Personally, I've never thought that that was the best way to go. I've really always felt that these are positions that people run for and are elected and the community should elect. So I, I just never agreed with that approach previously, having nothing to do with the fine, very qualified people who are appointed. It's just, it's just a principle thing for me. That said, to spend the money for such a short period of time, and I was privately quietly saying to Tommy John before the meeting, like, can't you just stay a little longer? Because I think that would be the ideal until May. But that said, I think for such a short period of time, it makes no sense to be spending that money. And, you know, one thing that we have heard from some people in the community is if you want something really quick, the next person who had run last time and who's on that ballot, I mean, that's one way to do it, early on for a few months. But that's one approach one could take.
Any other discussion on the floor? So based on what I'm hearing, I'll make a motion that we will make an appointment for the empty seat.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor of appointing to fill the empty seat?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstain? All right, motion carries. So we will make an appointment. So now let's talk just a little bit about process.
I can share, if it's helpful, I can share what we did a little over three years ago.
That would be great, thank you.
We may choose not to file that. But I recall that it was a relatively brief period of time. It might have been a couple of weeks, now we're around the holidays, so my call was at the holidays, people didn't have their email. But there was a brief period of time, and I can look it up how long it was. Brief period of time where we invited community members to, to express their interest. They emailed the district clerk with their interest, and then we set up one-on-one interviews with those candidates. We had developed a series of questions that were consistent to ask each candidate. And then after those face-to-face interviews, the board had a discussion and made a selection.
Right, so according to that timeline, the original discussion was August 13th of 2012, and then the interviews were held on September 11th of 2012. So that's on a timeline.
It was 13th.
We held the interviews over more than one night to accommodate.
And September 14th.
Yeah, Tommy John, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I was sworn in, in, in August of 13th.
Okay, I'm looking at the original one from the 2012 appointment process.
That's probably.
That's different.
Oh, we have.
That was the first appointment process. Yours was the second, 2013.
I think the timing, that was also a little different because of availability of people in summertime. But anyway, so I recall that once it was announced, usually, I think it was a couple of weeks that we gave people the opportunity to, I'm just remembering off the top of my head, I should look this up, to, to submit their interest. And then we lined up, we had, I think, two nights where we did interviews. It depends on how many people further ahead they're in.
You said one-on-one, I think you meant the whole board, one person at a time.
I'm sorry, yes, yes. The whole board and one person. And if you get five board members, you get five, but you don't want to hold it up.
Yeah.
But anyway, you have a quorum, and you do the interview with the individual candidates alone in the room so that you don't have any candidates in your existing quorum.
With private.
Wasn't there a process where you all did it in public?
No, the interview process was not public. It was private.
People asked if that could be, if they could, and the board made the decision that they would not have that, the public participate. They decided to have it in the...
There was a member of the public present.
And the one in 2012, if I'm correct, was held in a public meeting.
I'm sorry, go back. So what does that mean, there was a member in the public present?
No.
I'm not quite sure what it means, except that John Battle was sitting there, I remember it.
This is before you were here. These notes are from Groff.
This is from 2012, this is before you were here. This is the...
This isn't Tommy John's seat.
These are the meeting minutes, and it was...
They interviewed Tom Stray.
And it was, it was, it was an open meeting.
I seem to recall that there were photographs. It was covered.
Neapolitan temple.
I'm just remembering the one with Tommy John was, that that was, that was executive. They did it in executive, there was no public present. They waited outside in the hallway.
Yeah.
But what's the rationale to do that?
Well, let me just clarify. So the 2012 appointment process, you guys did it in public and then went into an executive session after the interview.
To delivery.
Correct.
Well, that's probably appropriate just because you're talking about this now, right?
And the, and the interviewing process can be in private, just like if Katie's interviewing candidates for a position in the district. It's a personnel process. Some people have expressed that they felt more comfortable if they're being interviewed for a job, that it'd be in a private setting. And they also may be asking questions about the position, that they feel more comfortable in a private setting. Think about if you go to a job interview, would you want it to be in public? So that's kind of like what this is. I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or the other, although I do think we'll get, it'll be more meaningful if it can be private because someone may not be willing to voice a concern or a question that's sensitive if it's public. But, and remember, our public meetings now are videotaped. This was not videotaped, you know, five years ago. So, anyway, it's...
But we all ran and were interviewed publicly, if you think about it. That's what the debates are.
That was going to be exactly my point. In other words, to sit on this board and be elected, you're answering questions in public in order, and, and getting signatures from community members, even to submit your name. So I fear that, and I understand what you're saying about the interview process, but one of, one of the things that I've heard in the community is, you know, appointing someone could be, you know, walking in treacherous ground and you don't want it to be secretive.
I'm going to say...
I could argue either side of that point, I really could. But when you're up, when you're at a deus and you're having a public, you know, one of those forums, it is not an intimate back and forth, it's when you have one candidate and it's more of a one-on-one interview process. But personally, I'm comfortable either way. Whatever the majority of board wants, I'm comfortable.
So taking a, taking a chair and putting it in the middle of the room?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't set up the room like this for that. We could sit over there.
Well, I mean, you can understand why it would be somewhat...
Yeah, intimidating.
Yeah, I mean, depending on the number of candidates, the other thing you could do is to bring everyone in and do a roundtable questions just as we did in the auditorium when people run for election. You know, obviously, in the minority, wanted to leave the seat open, but I just don't think that this board should do things, select a candidate to sit for the rest of Tommy John's term behind closed doors. I just, I'm afraid that would be a bad perception.
I agree.
And the committee on open government agrees as well because this is not an employee, and it would basically be jumping over the voters. So they agree that they, the interview should be held in public.
I think, actually, honestly, even inviting people to apply, I mean, the processes that were used before is also jumping over the voters. I mean, I think the only thing that's fair in terms of the voters is the next person who ran. You know, that's the quickest, easiest, fairest, simplest. Those people put their hat in the ring, they're experienced, they've already been through the training. You know, I realize that that may not fly, but it's a short period of time, and then it's not circumventing.
I'm sorry, Susan, but I think the motion and the vote that we took, we're going to do the route of allowing whomever wants to step forward to step forward.
So I thought, I thought it was just about appointing. It wasn't determined as to how.
Well, so if whoever...
That's what I thought I was leaning on.
If the person who got the next highest votes wants the seat, then they could put their name in the hat like everybody else, and then the board can decide who, who it is for whatever reasons they want.
Right, so I thought what we voted on, so, because I want to make sure I'm right, because otherwise I need to change my vote. I thought what we all just voted on is that we agreed that we would appoint.
Correct.
But we did not discuss process, and that's what we are discussing now, is to how we would do that appointment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And in the past, that process, from my research, has not been observed. The past two times have been appointments with interviews held.
Right.
We have to see who, at this day, time and date, actually is interested. I would never assume that because somebody ran a year or two years ago...
No, that could be, that they might, I mean, you're interested, that's absolutely true.
I'm hopeful, we have a lot of people who've been on this board who are still in this community, whether it's last year or five years or eight years ago. It would be easier to have someone who has served on the board, people who were on the board before me, who've been trained and have done this before because it takes a while to get acclimated, to understand, to get your seal legs in this role. So certainly, if there are previous board members, you know, that, and they, that are interested in applying, I think that would be great because then they could hit the ground running.
So I'd like to make a motion that we ask the community, we make a public statement of some sort. We ask the communities to submit letters of intent, that we develop standard interview questions and interview candidates. We'll do another motion in a minute as to whether that should be private or public. But the process of getting interested parties and interviewing them and making a decision, and making that timeline be within roughly a month.
Can I ask just a point of information? Question. Why is it that the process to post, because I, you know, in terms of seeing the minutes in the video from the last meeting, that we wouldn't even be able to have an election if we were to, if we were to go that route until March? It was really that far out?
Yeah.
And so that's because of all the posting requirements and...
You have to mail, you've got to mail, I think it's 75 days ahead of time?
65.
Or 65? It was more than, it was two months or longer?
Basically, I think it's important, because really on principle, I'm so against the appointment, I have to just say. But, but when you look at it, by the time you have March, you're literally looking at two months. So we'd spend $12,000 for an election for two months. Okay, I just want to be clear that that's the only reason I'm going with the appointment route.
Well, because it was a waste of money.
Yeah.
So the motion on the floor is that we ask for interested parties, we develop interview questions, and we interview them and make, and with the goal to make that appointment within roughly 30 days.
From start to finish?
Correct. Yep. Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I think we were looking at an appointment by the one, January 22nd meeting. The process would be finalized.
Thank you.
An appointment by January 22nd?
So that, because, right, the meeting before is too early in January, right?
I'm sorry, somebody give me the first meeting date in January.
I believe the 8th.
January 8th is...
So if we can have letters of intent and...
It's an email of interest, an email or letter of interest to the...
To the district clerk.
And say maybe the deadline by January 7th, so we would know who.
Yep.
And then do the, maybe do a special meeting in between the 8th and the 22nd. I mean, it depends on how many people we have. And then by the 22nd, be able to either finish up interviews and make the appointment. But I think the 22nd is a...
22nd to have appointment, and I would, I would suggest that if you were not making the decision that night, that you're actually...
Have somebody in the seat by that night.
Be able to swear someone in by that night.
Correct.
Could I make a suggestion before, I know we're, we're putting together the motion. You may be able to do the interviews in a work session situation. And call it a public work session. And so it's a lot more...
Um...
But public.
Can the, the process of submitting their name to Victoria, the district clerk, be as simple as an email, "Dear Victoria, I, John Smith, residing at..."
John Smith, you don't have to do it.
"Residing at blank would like to..." What? Be...
Considered, considered for the point.
Be considered for an appointment to the board, and that's done.
That's it, that's it.
This way, it's not any kind of formal launch.
That's it, yes.
The minute we send some email announcement out, someone literally can email Victoria and say, "This is my name. I would like my name put on the list to be considered." That's it. Okay.
To be interviewed.
And, and what I would suggest is, in the, you know, if we're going to announce it, let's just remind people what the requirement is to be, to be able to be qualified for consideration. You have to be registered in the district, you have been here sort of three times, or 18. I'm sorry?
Qualified, the way we...
We have qualified, thank you.
We have form letters.
Oh, qualified voter, thank you.
We have form letters from other districts that have done it, and they list the state requirements.
Perfect.
Can I throw out one other suggestion? So I think one of the things that's bothered me about the whole appointment process is that we're all sitting here interviewing somebody like it's a job, when it's not. It's a different thing. What about, and this actually saves time and would be fairer to the public? What about if instead of an interview process, it's a public debate forum, just like what any candidate went through? They line up the tables, anybody who wants to put their hand in the ring, it was a thing. The community gets to put in the questions. We can put in questions as members of the community. The, we ask the paper if they do it just the same as if they were running. And then, and then we can go into a closed session and, or, no, you can't vote in a closed session. I don't know how you would then, but then the board decides.
I think the...
So it's like a, marrying the best, but the public has the...
But I think by saying a debate, it's almost more intimidating. I agree with Tommy John's session to make it like an open work session where if they're all there...
But that's if we're interviewing.
So I'm going to, I'm going to hold that discussion for just a second because the motion on the floor is just about...
Timing.
The, the timing and the fact that there will be some sort of interview, whether it's private. So I want to hold that discussion for the next motion, if you don't mind.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor, which January's helped me pinpoint some of the details, is that we have an open response that Stephanie described with a deadline of January 27th. And then there'll be a window between 22nd.
Date wrong.
22nd, January 22nd?
But we need the, we need the intention by January 7th.
What did I say?
What's the other deadlines?
The first deadline, well, only one deadline, would be to have all the letters of intent or emails of intent by January 7th.
That's what I meant to say, thank you.
And then between...
And then with the goal that we have that seat filled by the 22nd.
The 22nd.
So the timeline, Donna, I'm sorry, and I know you're only voting on this, is that we, if you submit your name if you'd like to be considered by January 7th, between January 8th and January 21st, that's our next motion we didn't get to yet. And on January 22nd, someone will be sworn in.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So that's the motion on the floor. I think we're all clear on the motion on the floor.
Did you second, was that second?
I seconded it.
Yep. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? I think it's a fantastic idea, that's my discussion. Any other discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstain? All right, so let's talk about the, the work session interview. I, I think the first thing we need to decide is executive session or public. I'd like to motion to make it public.
Public.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who are in favor of having it be public?
Aye.
Any abstain? Any opposed? All right, so the interview process will be public.
Yep.
Just so we, I'm sorry, in a work session, not a meeting.
Correct.
Well, well, I don't think we can find what it is in public. The, the reason, one of the two times, I don't remember which one it was, we had to have two nights because one or two of the candidates couldn't make one of those nights. Unlike your annual vote where you have on your calendar for a while, usually meet the candidates night. You know, it's like the Friday before or whatever. We're, we're gonna be picking a date that we can make it and hoping that the candidates can all make it, right? So just so you know, with the interview, I don't remember if it was with, when Tommy John was appointed or the time before, but we had two nights, cause a couple of candidates couldn't make it one, a couple couldn't make it another. So my concern of having it be one event, and I love the idea of simulating what was done in the fall because I do think that it is more of a traditional process. My only concern is that, because this isn't on anyone's calendar yet, that what happens if one or two candidates can't make it? Then are they automatically disqualified? And if they're not, how is that fair because they haven't participated in the process?
I think if we can get the letters of intent by the seventh and then have the process occur between the eighth and the twenty-second. Like I said, we could have two, we could have one, we could have no one, I don't know. I think that's something that we can make flexible and just as of right now. Right, we're meeting on the eighth and we'll know, we'll know exactly.
Right, but what I'm saying is if, if we're gonna have to do that similar as we do in this, uh, meet the candidates night, you can only do that if they're all gonna be available to be there, which I'm just saying that that might be an obstacle.
I understand. I, I think that we have now made a decision, at least primarily about big picture process. So that will give us a chance to kind of ruminate with some of these ideas that have been tossed around a little bit and see how many people are actually interested. If there's two people that are interested or twelve people are interested, it might change.
But before that cutoff date, we have to get our calendars out and try to pick either one night or a few nights that were available. So we can't wait to know how long that list is before we start working on our calendar cause it's really hard for us to get a quorum on any night besides the board meeting.
I understand.
So.
So what I'm gonna suggest is that we move forward with taking the names and opening that to the public and making some announcements, letting the public know about the timeline. Then we can give our availability to the district clerk. She can still look in at the calendar and making those coordinations. And then at the, on the eighth, we can have another discussion where we see where we stand and see what our options are. And we'll have a better idea of what that might take shape.
Can we just, as part of seeing our options, between now and then, talk to the paper about whether they would be willing to do something like what is normally happening if somebody's running? So, you know, up and everybody gets to do questions, you know, you know, they, they moderate it. And that way, and it's not any more intimidating, different than what a candidate would go through. And what I like about that is a number of things. Number one, it replicates more of an election. Number two, it gets the community involved because they can come watch the candidates and they can submit questions. Number three, it would be moderated by the paper and a forum, just, you know, so there's none of the whatever mishegahs. It's just straight and fair to all the candidates.
Is that a word?
Yes, it is. It is a word.
I've heard, I've heard somebody use it, mishegahs, don't put it in the word.
And it's a perfect word in this.
Never.
Thank you. I need the spelling of that.
Turn the minutes.
So, so when folks are emailing or writing in their letter of interest or their email of interest.
Just that, John Smith, no, don't complicate it.
Okay, should we, should we also ask that they submit if there's any dates between the seventh and the twentieth? That doesn't work for them because, or, to conform our decision? Cause we could decide, okay, we're gonna pick one night not knowing that half of them can't make it.
It just seems like a cart before the horse. Let's just see who's gonna reply and if there's two people, it'll be easy to coordinate. If there's twelve, then we'll make sure there's enough days open.
All right, we good? Yes.
Is, is this a motion that we're?
Uh, no, I'm just asking that we table this discussion to the next meeting.
Okay. Since I won't be here at the next meeting, if I could weigh in. You know, I, I like the idea and I certainly like the spirit of it, however, it's not an election. And this person, whoever, you know, will in fact have to, if they do decide to run again, will be doing this again in, in May. And so I, I don't know, that seems like a lot to put someone through. I also think it kinda, it kinda skews to the advantage of people who have done this before. And that's not a bad thing, it just is. You know, if I've never been in front of people before ever and I wanted to consider being appointed to the board, I, I don't know. It just, it might, I, I think it would greatly narrow the pool of candidates that the board would wanna see. But I, I do like the idea. And I would say if you were going to do something like that, you should go ahead and have the election. But I won't be.
But then that's twelve thousand dollars for two months.
I understand the downsides.
So I'm trying to get all the benefits of this, if there was election. Plus the public participation, plus open.
So we have time to think about it, this is, these are a lot of options that we've bounced around. I'm gonna give people a chance to think about it.
So we're gonna make a decision on how we actually conduct the process at the meeting on the seventh?
On the eighth.
On the eighth.
On the eighth.
And we'll know how many people, how many names and how many date conflicts we'll have by then. Cause the seventh, can you cut it off on a Sunday?
Yes.
Yes, you're allowed to cut it off. Okay, you read your emails on Sundays?
Well, no, she'll open them on Monday.
I think so, I do.
Diana, I, I think, I think the board tonight really needs to, to make a decision on what kind of either interview or public interview, for lack of a better word. Because that will probably weigh into people's decision on whether or not that they are going to.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I, I, sure.
Make a motion.
I, I move that, that the board hold, hold interviews in a, in a public work session situation. And since the board will be making this decision, the board should ask the questions of the candidates.
I second the motion. Discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yeah, I, I agree with Tommy John. I think that the idea to have in public, I think that's, that's a good idea that will allow the public to participate. But at the same time, I think like a whole thing in the auditorium is a bit much for something that's to fill a seat. We're gonna be doing that a couple of months later in May. And I think that there's going to be an election where, maybe no one is gonna submit their name. But assuming people submit their name, someone is selected, it's for a short period of time, there's going to be an election just a few months later. So I, I think that what Tommy John has suggested is the best way to work.
I, I would add that I agree with his point. I think we'll have a larger potential pool of candidates if we follow that process. And I think it's always good. So I support Tommy John's motion.
I agree with Tommy John. I think that, but kind of an intimate interview that's public, so they can, maybe we, anybody that wants to watch can watch that interview and we have the same questions for every candidate. And then it's the, at the end of it, we can, we can decide who he thinks is the best candidate, if it's obvious right away. Or we can deliberate, for lack of think about it or whatever. But I, I agree that doing all, asking the paper to do something like that on short notice is, is unnecessary.
I'm sorry, does that mean that if there are twelve candidates, they would all be in a work situation together?
I would think that if there was twelve candidates, we might have to do it over two nights.
But even one-on-one, these are one-on-one interviews.
Correct.
One-on-one interviews. Why not, one with the board?
One at a time.
Not, not twelve in a room together that were asking the same questions on down.
Yeah, David, motion is about one person at a time?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and we should probably publish the questions because it would be somewhat unfair to the first interviewee as opposed to the twelfth interviewee.
Right.
The twelfth will have the questions, the first will not.
Okay.
VISA has published their list of questions. But I don't think we should publish questions.
Well, I think they're going to be published. My point is if you interview people one at a time in a public meeting, the people after will have heard the question.
Well, they won't be in the room.
Well, if it's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting, someone will text them if they're waiting in the hall. But my concern on that is honestly, is that someone's gonna write their answers for them if they don't know what's going on. Are they gonna come up with somebody who's ready? I, you know, I, I.
Well, then.
If they did their research, they can find the questions online.
Then this gets us back to the executive session part. Because the first person or the last person interviewed will clearly have an advantage because they will know the questions.
And other responsibilities.
That's one of the reasons why we didn't do the topic.
That's why, that's why.
Right.
Well, and, and yet, and yet another reason why what I proposed, which is the way the paper does it, which is the way all of us went through it, is actually more fair. And it allows for questions from the public, which they submit, which I think is more fair and more open.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I understand your concern, Tommy John, I think. And I understand it was the way it was done when you were putting it forward. But I think that there's no reason we can't do something different, that it reflects something that is the spirit more of an election and involves the public and is more transparent. So anyway, I, I, I mean, I'm probably a lone voice on this, I, is my impression. But I just think it's actually more fair than doing it with us interviewing the candidate.
Other discussion on the floor, Stephanie?
Yeah, I was just thinking that you eliminate a, a interview question process. The way I pictured it was that you give the questions in advance, but ask the, the person that is stepping forward to fill a seat, whether they run or not rerun in May is up to them. Why they wanna do it and to address certain bullet points that the board might be concerned about. And just let them make statements rather than make it the Spanish Inquisition, am I right? Am I on that one? I feel like we would, that there's no reason to put somebody in a chair here with all of us staring at them, being videotaped when they're trying to do a good thing and serve the community. So I, I, I did not expect that it would be a one-on-one. I almost felt that we would close this in a square, have whoever it is, assuming there's three or four. If it's twelve, we're here two nights, three nights, doesn't matter. And that they make a statement somewhat similar to what we did at meet the candidates night, without the newspaper asking pointed questions. But why do you wanna do this?
The newspaper did ask pointed questions.
But I'm saying eliminate that. The, the person will be in the chair from January twenty-second and rerunning a campaign with signs if they choose to in three seconds. So whoever it is that steps forward, if they address why they wanna do this, who they are, give us a little bit of background. And if we specifically wanna ask questions, give them to them in advance so that they can be prepared to answer them in their monologue. And without putting them on the spot.
But guys, one of the things that we've all talked about though is how difficult it is to get everybody together and the time commitment, right? In ter, in the way you're talking about with this one at a time thing, it's way more time than is necessary. Whereas one night, everybody comes in, they do their spiel, they have a few questions that the paper asks, that the public can submit, that we can submit.
So I'm saying we're to the point where I wanna make sure everybody's been heard once before you chime in again with the, the discussion on the motion on the floor. Did, I hear from everybody, I just wanna make sure.
I, I, I'm sorry, I forgot, what is the motion that's coming on the floor?
Go ahead.
So Tommy John has motioned that the board hold interviews in a public work, work session, one person at a time and publish the questions. And Diana seconded it.
My, my concern about publishing the questions, as I said, I think that if they don't know what's going on in school or not involved at all, somebody's gonna write the answers for them. I have seen that. I can say that we haven't participated in the last two rounds. When you do have the one-on-one, or one with the board interview process, sometimes someone will say something and then a question comes up or arises based on that. And you ask, what questions do you have for us? And it's meaningful dialogue when a candidate, it has the ability to do that as well. And, and so I just, I mean, maybe because it's just what I know, but the last two processes turned out really well, worked well. So I'm not saying that it can't be worked as well in a different way. But, and I, and I get the fact that if the public's there and participating, there are so many benefits to that. But I have to tell you, we didn't get pushback either time last time. And the candidates told us they thought it was fair because it, no one had the advantage of knowing with the next person. When you're on a panel, if you get that hard question and you're the first, you're the first one talking, you're in a very different situation than you're the fifth one talking, right?
Which is why I'm suggesting we eliminate that.
So, so I, I just again, I, I do think that there is an advantage to having these private conversations where no one has a different advantage, where they can ask you questions that, but anyway.
Are you suggesting the board should go?
Hang, hang on, there, there's a motion on the floor and I'm just trying to discuss the motion on the floor so we can make a vote. Is there any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Go ahead.
Just, I think that that last point that was made is a good one, is that I, I like the public aspect of it. But it made, I don't know why that everyone has to get the same questions. Or I understand the unfairness of, you know, of that if everyone gets the same questions. But what, what's wrong with just having it in public, but having the board ask questions? And maybe there're gonna be different questions for different candidates. Cause at the end of the day, this, this, it's not an election. It's we as a board have to make a decision. And maybe it would be more productive for it to be public, but for the board to just ask whatever questions they have for each candidate. And the, and the, I think the point you're making that the question may come up based on a response they gave to, to a previous question, so.
And one might, just push this along a little bit, just to be thoughtful, is, is between February and May, eight meetings, the person will be participating in eight meetings. I mean, just because normally when you're going through that, all that, being in front of the public, you're talking about a full year that that person is being elected. This will be eight meetings.
Three years.
Yeah, and three years, a three-year term. So there's a, a level of rigor that person really has to be excellent, go through. So I just wanna kinda weigh in that this'll be eight meetings.
Diana, I'd like to change the motion and to change the word interview to, what do we wanna say? Candidate presentations? Rather than an interview. I like Stephanie's suggestion, prospective candidates can get a.
A statement.
A statement.
And we wouldn't be asking questions?
And the board of course can ask questions because it's a work session.
Yeah. So we'd be able to ask questions about, if they make a statement and it says, someone says, I'm running cause I really, I wanna make sure that you have red vegetables in your salad bar. That we can ask why, is that important to you?
I, I, I'm, I, I think a short statement followed by form questions that are basically the same and, and basic general questions. I, I think that's how it's been done in the past.
Pre-published January?
No.
Okay, so then the only thing that I would suggest is if someone asked me what BOSI's was on day one, I would not intelligently answer.
I have, I have the list of questions from VISA and they are generic and.
Right, so don't try to trick anybody is what I'm saying, okay?
No, there's not, no one wants to deter anyone.
So I, I think that there's a lot of.
That helped me, thank you. See how small I am three is later.
So I think there's a lot of conversation that the board needs to just think about. And I'm just gonna ask that we, Tommy John put a motion on the floor to amend his, his motion. And I, I respect the fact that you'd like to call it to a vote, but I still feel like there's a lot that we're still kinda thinking through and processing and that takes time. And I, we've spent twenty minutes talking about this now, if not more. So I would, what I'd like to do is just table this discussion, let board members think about it, think about what makes sense. And, and I can get the will of the board as to whether we publish questions or not. If you wouldn't mind submitting questions to me that you would like to ask. I, I think that we can kind of work this through and we don't need to do it tonight with the administrators running.
Haven't, have we voted that the process will be in public?
Yeah, we already approved.
Yes, we good then, right? Can I ask a point of, let me point of something real fast?
Administration.
Yeah, whenever. Um, Wednesday, is there an opportunity at all for us Wednesday to continue the conversation without holding everybody here?
Yes.
So do you have to add that to the agenda? That's the only reason I'm asking.
We can amend the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
It would be a pub, that's a public conversation and so we would need to have it be public.
Yes, we can amend the agenda.
Um, so I can make a motion to table this discussion till Wednesday.
There you go.
So then do we, do we do that first before we go into exact, so people wanna be according to that they have?
Correct.
I'm sorry, Tom's availability, be careful because.
So maybe we move it to six?
After.
Yeah, I, I, yes, may. Yeah, I, I, yes, maybe, and then...
Because if he's going to come at six-thirty, we, we, if we're going to amend the agenda anyway, we can start the meeting at six, and...
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you.
Can you do that, Chris?
Yeah, is that, does that work for everybody else?
I mean, we're going to be here, and obviously...
Just in case someone wanted to be here for that conversation, I wanted to make sure they had the opportunity.
Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, we are.
Six o'clock?
Yes.
Can we change the start time?
We just did.
But you need a second.
Uh, thank you.
I'm sorry, who did?
So the motion to, uh, table this discussion till Wednesday at six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. So we will continue that conversation, I encourage board members to really think that through, maybe read up a little bit.
And what I can do too is, I can see if I can dig up those questions from the last slide?
That would be fantastic, thank you.
Does that help?
Is there anybody that would like to speak at public input two? Public input two? Okay. I need to make motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person.
Salute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, motion carries, let's take a short break, we'll reconvene in ten minutes.